Welcome everybody and welcome. We are going to start right this second at 7 o'clock. The FCCA is known for starting on time, we're just not known for ending on time. But thank you for being here. Democracy in action tonight, right? Lots of worldviews with Brexit stuff, exoneration, Fall City Proposition 1. I have already got a lineup this week, lots going on. This is going to be very important, it's going to be hopefully very informative and interesting. My name is Ashley Glennon and I'm the President of the FCCA. It's great to have you here tonight. And I want to introduce and thank my fellow FCCA officers for agreeing to set up a forum such as this. I have personally asked to not really be all that apprised as to precisely what the questions are, or how the process and setup work, so that we could and I can remain as neutral as possible as I attempt to broker or moderate this discussion. Nevertheless, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Simon Bryant in a moment to take on a big chunk of it this evening. But let me do this real quick, I just mentioned my name, I'm Ashley, I'm the President of the FCCA. I'm a volunteer, so I don't get paid anything like that. Anyway, then Mr. Simon Bryant, wherever he is over here, he is our Vice President. He'll be facilitating a good chunk tonight. And we've got Lori Howley, who was last seen over there in the back. Nancy Moore, I see nearby. And then Mary Butler is around here somewhere in the very back. I want to thank the FCCA officers here for setting up chairs, as well as our firefighters for doing the same. And thanking Chief Canham for, I guess, renting us this room. And many more. So yeah, this is going to be an interesting night, no doubt. We will go ahead and formally kick it off with the good old grand old flag. We'll please rise for a quick pledge of allegiance, and after that we'll go ahead and kick this here thing off. And hey, by the way, because we have a patriotic here, we do want to have a very small moment of silence at the end of this to thank our veterans, firefighters, and all first responders. Alright. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, thank you for everybody whose spot is served. So what are we here for this evening, right? We're going to learn about Proposition 1. There's a lot to learn, a lot to attempt to understand. We're going to try to unpack as much as we can tonight. And here is in high level summary, among the reasons we are here. Because once upon a time, several different choices, this was not the exhaustive list, but many choices were posed to the community as to what might we do with Fire District 27. And the collective wisdom landed on, how about that proposal to merge with King County Fire District 10? It's itself a member of Eastside Fire and Rescue. That has been translated into something known as Proposition 1, which goes to vote on April 23. And tonight you will learn about the pros and cons, the yes, the no's, etc. regarding that. Now, I'm told there's a piece of context I need to share with you all. And I'll go ahead and read verbatim from a neutral set of statements. And it says, "Who is the Issaquah Fire District 10, FD 10? And how is this different from Eastside Fire and Rescue?" So I'm told this question will provide neutral and factual context for the discussion this evening. So again, the question is, "Who is Issaquah Fire District 10? And how is this different from Eastside Fire and Rescue?" And the answer is, Issaquah Fire District 10 is a fire district like Fall City Fire District 27. So they're both fire districts, and I believe to be a fire district, don't crucify me if I get this wrong, you're a fire district if you're not part of Bellevue, or you're not part of some formalized city entity. Next up, EFR, that would be Eastside Fire and Rescue. Is a contractor that provides fire and medical services to cities, fire districts, and others. And then Issaquah Fire District 10 contracts for fire and medical services from EFR. So these little details may prove prominent as the discussion gets underway this evening. Alright, with that in mind, let me advance slides. And here's the real reason why we're here. Does this make sense? Of course not. I'm seeing signs, vote yes, vote no, don't vote, right? Vote Trump, don't vote Trump, right? We're seeing stuff everywhere. And what we hope tonight to do is to disambiguate what all this yes and no stuff means. Now, at this point in time, I want to turn it over to Mr. Simon Bryant, our Vice President, to kind of take you through a good chunk of the evening. We may take turns, but I'm going to turn it over to him. And I'm going to run in the back, and for those of you who like trivial logistics setup stuff. There's a giant timer on the wall, if you want to look over your left shoulder, there's a giant timer up there. That's designed to keep us speakers and the delegates, if you will, on track. And so I'm going to go back there and monkey with that for a minute while Simon walks you through tonight's guidelines. Alright, Simon, thank you, man.
Alright, thank you everyone for being here. I'm Simon, I'm the Vice President of the FCCA. First thing I want to do is just introduce our panels up here. So we've got two different sides, obviously. We've got the people who are what we call the Pro Committee, which are voting yes on Prop 1. And then the Con Committee, which is voting no on Prop 1, which is basically no merger and merger approved. So we've got Brandon and Jay, if you guys want to raise your hands, they're on the yes votes. And we've got Robert and Kevin on the no votes. So they'll be coming up here, they'll be speaking from the podium to you tonight as we give opening statements, answers to questions, and then closing statements as well. So just kind of moving forward here, general rules, if everyone will please silence their phones, that'll be awesome. We are videotaping this, we're going to put this up online afterwards. So please be on your best behavior. This will be on the internet for the rest of the community to see. If people have questions or need more information going into their ballots, whether it's a mail ballot or in-person ballots, I'm not sure if we can do that anymore, but I think it's mostly mail and ballots these days. If you have questions, we want it on the internet so people can see, you know, get good information about what's going on within the community. So no commentary or audience participation during the question answer. No booing, if you don't like something somebody says, please don't say anything or do anything in the audience. If you do want to show approval after an answer is given, so they're going to have three minutes to give an answer. If you want to show approval for that answer, you may clap after that answer is given. So just wait till the speakers don't hand you back to their chair, and you may give a round of applause. Again, please remember at the end of the day, you all still are neighbors, you all live very close to each other, so just be respectful, remember that it's a neighborhood and we want to keep it civil up here. So finally, keep an open mind, you're going to hear a lot of different comments and opinions. Obviously, that's the point of this debate, is to give you guys as much information as possible. So keep an open mind about what's happening here today. And yeah, just be respectful to each other. How will this work? So the community submitted questions, we opened it up to the community. We had an online basement area where you could go in and submit your questions you wanted today. We had the panels select out of the list. I think we had 32 questions submitted total. Out of all those questions, each panel selected four that they wanted to have in the debate today. And then we combined them and have eight questions total. Both panels will answer each question. So there'll be a set order in which they come up and answer those questions to make it nice and easy. And I'll kind of go through that today. And then we'll hear opening and closing statements from both sides. So we're going to start with our introduction, obviously. We'll go over the dice roll in just a second. We are going to roll to see who starts and does their opening statement first. Seemed like the most easy and fair way to do it. Then the first committee will give an opening statement depending on the dice roll. The second committee will give an opening statement after that. Those are five minutes each. And then after that, we have, we'll start with the first question. I'll come up and I'll read the question each time, so the question will be verbally read by me. And then on the first question, the pro side, the yes vote, will go first to answer the question. And then the no side will have a chance to answer that same question. And they'll each be given three minutes to do that. On the second question, the no side will go first, and then the yes side will go after that. And it'll switch back and forth as we go through all the questions, giving each team a chance to answer a question first and respond to the question after. After that, we'll do closing statements, five minutes each for those. The person who gave the opening statement first will also do the closing statement first. So that'll give the person who didn't get a chance to give their opening statement first a chance to kind of give the last word in the debate, give the final statement of the night. After that, we'll do a quick conclusion up here, myself and Ashley. And that'll be, so we think that'll probably take about 80 minutes total to go through the whole process here. As I said, opening, closing, and statements are going to be about five minutes long, each question three minutes. And then before we get started, I just wanted to give a round of applause and a quick thank you to our firefighters, we have a few here this evening. At the end of the day, we're really thankful for having a fire department here. And you know, the great work you guys have been doing over the past couple of years, so we really appreciate it. And you know, I think everyone wants to feel like they have your best interests in mind when they go to the ballots in the next month or so. And then we just have some pictures of the fire department here as well. So we're going to do a dice roll real quick, so I've got my little yellow cup here.
While Simon does the dice roll, he admits trivia stuff happening in the background. I wanted to thank Mr. Luke Shaler of Luke Shaler Photography. He will be videotaping, as you heard this evening. And Jay Cryne, thanks to Jay Cryne. So Jay and Luke must know each other somehow or other. And what we may choose to do as a result of tonight's outcome, depending on how Luke does at Urban Roof Farm, is we may actually decide to stream or record future FCCA meetings. As you know, this happens on Tuesday evenings now. And they're well attended, but a lot of people, of course, can't come or don't want to show up. And it's more fun to watch an FCCA meeting in pajamas at home whenever you want, as opposed to having to show up. So thank you Luke for the photography tonight, man. Alright, so Simon has a startling dice roll results. Here he is.
So the results were a five for the yes side and an eight for the no side. The no side elected to introduce second. So the yes side is going to be doing their opening statements first. So as soon as Ashley is ready on the timer, I'm going to hand the mic over to you guys. And whenever you're ready, please get started.
And the preference is that you guys actually come to the podium. And that, for Luke's sake, if you don't mind, right?
I'm just going to leave the mic, set the mic up on the podium.
Yeah, Luke, this point here, and this will light your veteran gaze, and look this gentleman in the eyes, right? So alright, let me, oh by the way, and for those of you, let's say you were bored by our response at any time, you can always turn around, as promised, and see how much time they have left, right? So don't forget. Alright. One second, we'll kick you off. Are you ready? Are you ready, sir? Alright, ready, say go.
I'm going to apologize for reading because I just want to be thorough and accurate. And public speaking is not my thing. My name is Jay Luer, I was fortunate to be raised in Fall City and raise my two kids here. My grandfather was the second fire chief here, and my dad volunteered here for over 20 years. I had the honor of being a third generation volunteer for Fall City Fire and also to work as a paid career firefighter here. I understand the history, and I've seen many changes over the last 50 years. I live here, I own property here, I own business here. And I'm here tonight because this is an important decision for our community. Tonight, we will show how approving Proposition 1 will lower costs for better fire services, be a better use of our tax dollars, result in fewer tax dollars spent, provide long-term financial stability, provide continued opportunities for volunteers, provide better pay and benefits for fire district employees, and show support for our firefighters, giving them more training opportunities to be prepared for any call.
I live at the north end of Fall City. I moved here about five years ago. We have, my wife and I have two young kids, 10 and three, two busy boys. The oldest one goes to school here in Fall City. And my wife is currently next door at the elementary school. We're on the fundraiser tonight, so otherwise it would be your cousin Havik and back. I joined the fire department 22 years ago as a volunteer. That's when I stumbled into this wonderful profession. I've worked for Bellevue Fire Department for 16 years, I'm a paramedic there. I'll be serving up at North Bend Medic 3 later tonight. So if anyone's fortunate or unfortunate enough to need M11 services, you might see me. So a little background on the pro side. So we spent the last years, when I'm going since December of 2017, we were approached and presented with the opportunity to merge with Fire District 10. So we spent a better part of eight months researching that proposal. And during that, we decided we should look at all possible options to us. And that was where we came up with the options that were shown to you earlier. Where we had the option to join as a partner, which as we decided was too expensive. It's going to cost over half a million dollars more than what we currently spend. We had the option to stay solo, which didn't really solve any of our current problems. So some of our issues are we don't have much training opportunity for our firefighters. We've had to shut some of our services down, like our boat was unavailable for a good chunk of the summer last year for over a month. We can't send our firefighters away to training. We keep losing our firefighters because they are going out to places where they can get more reliable, sustainable employment. And they're not worried about the next levy, deciding whether or not they're going to have a job. There's more opportunity for promotion for them. It's just unfortunately, being a one-station department, there's limited call volume, limited opportunity for firefighters. And so really can't blame them for that. So as we went through, we gathered all our information, we presented it to the fire commissioners, and let them decide. We asked if there was any more information that they wanted to get. The fire commissioners decided to boil it down to the best option available to us, and that was to merge with Fire District 10. So we're going to go through tonight and present you with some of the questions that we have, and hopefully answer as many questions as we have, or that we can answer for you. We spent a lot of time, there's hundreds of hours that have gone into researching all these options. We've poured over financial statements of District 10, of Eastside Fire. We had Chief Clark, if you haven't met Chief Clark from Eastside Fire over there. Chief Connor was at almost every one of the meetings. We had representatives from the community, so we were well represented. And we wanted to make sure we did a thorough, honest job. So when we were done, it was very transparent to the community that we could look at the information and choose what you want to do. If you vote no, I don't care with that, but at least do it for an honest, legitimate reason. There's a lot of things being thrown around skewed as facts, some nasty stuff being said online. So just encourage people to talk to the fire chief, talk to Chief Connor, talk to your firefighters. Do your homework, go online to the fire department website and look at the pro/con statement. That everyone on the community, on the committee, including Robert on the no committee, we all agreed upon those things for the yes and no side. So there are some cons to it, nothing is one-sided. So I hope you bet your selves tonight, I hope you do a good job with it. Thanks.
Thank you. I want to thank our president, who's already a 100% on-time ratio this evening so far. So thank you guys for being on time. Alright, when I say go, on my mark, you can. Okay, ready, set, go.
I'd like to thank the Fall City Community Association for hosting this event and for allowing the citizens an opportunity to hear factual information needed to make an informed decision on a very important proposition. My name is Robert Angersano, and I'm a Fall City resident and a voter. I'm also a certified firefighter and EMT, a King County EMS instructor. And I've been a wildland firefighter for about 10 years, and a volunteer firefighter for about 30 years. I'm currently a volunteer for a city of all major citizens and quality. I was a fire commissioner for about 18 years, and I was directly involved and engineered of two mergers. So I'm very familiar firsthand with why you should merge, how you should merge, and the laws governing a merger. Last year, I was nominated by the Fall City Board of Commissioners to serve on the Evaluation Committee to evaluate and define options for the future of the fire department and provide that data to the commissioners to help guide their decision. Now I'm going to turn my partner here and let Kevin introduce himself.
Good evening all. Glad to see so many people out tonight. And I believe that we all here to learn more about a very important vote later on in April. My name's Kevin Howley, I live here in the community. Been here since 1981, my wife and myself, we raised our three daughters, five grandchildren. And we have our business here in town. And we, like everybody in this room, love Fall City. And that's why we're all here, because we care. I also served, as I said, 25 years as a firefighter volunteer EMT here in town. I also served for three years as a fire commissioner. Chris Connor and myself started on the same day in 1981 as volunteers here in this community. And it was one of the best experiences I've ever had in my life. I just look forward to every night, including the building of the fire station that we have today, and spending the nights there and serving the community. I would ask that you all listen tonight, and there's always two sides to every story. And do your homework, hopefully we present a good case, and we'll have access to a lot of information out there for you to go seek on your own. Thank you.
The committee opposing the merger is a small group of concerned citizens, two of which served on the Evaluation Committee, as Brandon mentioned. We've been watching or involved in this process since the beginning. Our entire campaign is geared to presenting factual information to inform the citizens of Fall City so you can make an educated decision on what you want to do. That's one of the things that we've seen missing in this process. For the purposes of transparency, everything we say tonight will be backed up with factual documentation, which is available right now on our website, which is safelcityfire.com. We're not going to say anything tonight that we can't back up with third-party factual information. And that's one of the things that's really a hallmark of the difference between our campaign, we believe, and the campaign for the merger. As Brandon mentioned, I was on the committee to evaluate options. What wasn't mentioned though, is on May 24th, when we were giving an update to the commissioners as to where we were at that point in time, and the work we had yet to do to investigate all the different options, the process was prematurely stopped. It was stopped and they said, "That's it, we know enough, we're going to make a decision." So we never fully investigated all the options. And since then, we've sat through several commissioner meetings, and we've asked the commissioners, "Put the brakes on, there's no rush, we don't have to do this merger vote right now." There's absolutely no timeline that says we have to do it on April 23rd. We can take the time to go through all the options, finish the evaluation, do the job that we should be doing for the citizens of the community, and then let the citizens decide on what the best option was. So we were not allowed to finish that process. Thank you.
Thank you for your opening statements. So we're going to lead off with the first question. As a reminder, these questions, you have five minutes to respond. Sorry, three minutes, I can't even get this right. Three minutes to respond to these questions. The first group giving answers on this one will be the yes vote. And then the no vote will have a chance to give their three-minute response to that as well. So the first question is, "What level of service does Fire District 27 provide to the community now versus what would they provide if merged with Fire District 10?" So I'll leave the mic on the podium here. Yes vote, whenever you guys are ready, pick up the mic and you guys can start.
Alright, there is no doubt that service levels will be better in a merger. Here is one example from when I was a tenant here in 2005, 2006. There was a summertime brush fire in our district while EFR was engaged with a structured fire in one of their areas. EFR did send a water tender from North Bend to help us with water supply. But at least two times, I asked for additional resources, but was understandably denied by the EFR Battalion Chief because the coverage for the areas that they are responsible for was very thin because of the fire event they were dealing with. They must protect the areas of their responsibility first. Across the street from this brush fire was about a 12-acre field with dry grass, a street with about eight homes on it, and the residents were lined up on the street watching flames shoot at a 50-foot tree with some frustrated firefighters. If EFR were responsible for fire services in this area, Fall City, they would have had the ability to move Bellevue fire resources to cover Issaquah so EFR could send more help to Fall City. That is one of the benefits of regional fire services. I could talk about examples like this all night, but these are helpful situations for firefighters. Last summer, the Fall City Rescue Bus was temporarily placed out of service for a short period because the operators needed additional safety training. With the merger, we would have special operation teams available at any time, such as swiftwater rescue, technical rescue, road hiding hole, trench, hazmat teams. And there is a very good chance that those teams and their equipment will be stationed in Fall City because of our central location in EFR's area. Here are some of the line items in EFR's expense projections right now that are new additional services that would be available to us with this merger. Technical rescue team, wildland team, hazmat team, community liaison officer, search disaster preparedness, fire prevention, all items that would increase the levels of service in Fall City. Another benefit with the merger is cost avoidance. For example, with equipment, Fall City has one backup fire engine and one backup aid unit for one station. Since resources can be shared in a merger, one backup fire engine and one backup aid unit can be shared among the four stations. That's a big cost savings. In total, the cost avoidance savings would be about $1 million over 10 years. Also, items would be replacing, include our, would be replacing here in Fall City, include our water tender, air packs, our rescue tools.
So much has been said by the firefighter union about the need to merge with Issaquah District 10 to increase service levels in Fall City. Here are some facts to consider about the staffing levels and automatic mutual aid dispatch. Today, the fire department consists of 11 career firefighters, 12 volunteer firefighters, and a fire chief, Battalion Chief on our station, who responds to all major events along with the fire crews. The department has very effectively used their volunteer organization to augment the career firefighters. In Fall City today, typically, seven days a week, 24 hours a day, 98.1% of the time, they respond with three or more firefighters to a call. And that was before they hired the 11th career firefighter. We have enough money to hire a 12th career firefighter, and we absolutely should. However, what's more important is not whether you show up on scene with two or three people, but that when you go to a call, you get the additional manpower and resources that are needed as quickly as possible to assure the additional needed resources arrive in a timely manner. Mutual aid agreement exists between all agencies in our area. The officer on scene does not have to request additional resources from neighboring agencies. They are automatically dispatched on a pre-arranged profile for the type of incident. This is standard practice throughout King County. This automatic dispatch of major events, for instance cardiac arrest or a structured fire, is called a run card. Copies of these actual run cards were obtained from the fire chief and posted to our website. So you can go on the website, you can view these run cards for yourself. But let me give you an example of what would happen. If you had a cardiac arrest in Fall City, here's what would automatically be dispatched without even asking for it. A local BLS unit, a medic unit, two additional closest BLS units, and a battalion chief. That's 12 people that would respond automatically into Fall City for a cardiac arrest. If we had a structured fire, and this is today, if we had a structured fire today in Fall City, automatically, without being asked, the local Fall City engine would be dispatched, the Fall City chief, the EFR ladder truck, a second EFR ladder trucker pumper, three additional closest engines, a battalion chief, the North Zone Battalion Chief, the medical supervisor, the medical unit, a medical unit, a basic life support unit, and hazmat if needed. That's a minimum of 27 people responding to a call, along with more engines and equipment that you could fit on a city block in Fall City. We saw this type of response, the last structured fire we had in 2017. And if any of you saw that, you know exactly what I mean. So the answer to the question.
We're going to be on the timer here, so make sure you guys are keeping the responses. I know we both cut you guys off, hopefully it doesn't affect things too much, but make sure you're staying within three minutes maybe. Okay, next question, keeping this thing rolling. When did merger discussions with Issaquah Fire District 10 start? Who initiated them, and who will benefit from a merger? So the no vote is going to go first on this one, and the yes vote is going to respond.
The genesis of the merger started when Issaquah District 10 and Eastside Fire and Rescue approached our fire chief around August of 2017. Here's what's recorded in the official meeting minutes for the Fall 50th City Commissioners Meeting on August 8th, 2017, and I quote, "Chief Connor reported that he had been contacted by Chief Clark from Eastside Fire and Rescue. He stated that for longer-term planning and viability purposes, Issaquah District 10 was interested in consolidating with other agencies. Chief Connor stated that Kohani annexation is driving some of this and has impacted..." Issaquah District 10's service in revenue in their area." In simple terms, what this means is that Issaquah District 10 lost a lot of tax revenue when the city of San Amish annexed Kohani, and they were looking for ways to replace that revenue. So they approached the districts to the north and the districts to the south. To the south, they approached Maple Valley; to the north, they approached Fall City. Maple Valley rejected Issaquah District 10's merger proposal and instead partnered with Pudsey Sound Regional Fire Authority and signed a contract that took effect on July 1st, 2018. That left them with one option, and that's Fall City. At the Fall City Commissioners Meeting on October 23rd, 2017, Union President John Weissman spoke on behalf of the local and stated, and I quote, "The local supports District 10 and District 27 merger." All of this happened months before the evaluation committee was formed, and as you can see, the template for the results and the predetermined outcome was already set. A letter posted to the fire department's website dated March 15th, 2018, from the Fall City Fire Department to the citizens of Fall City states the following, and I quote, "Recent discussions to consolidate with Eastside Fire and Rescue date back to 2008, following an independent consultant study released in January 2008, suggesting consolidation with Eastside Fire and Rescue is a preferred option." This is completely false. You can go up on our website and you will read for yourself a copy of that 2008 study. Nowhere in that study does it mention anything about consolidating or merging with either District 10 or Eastside Fire and Rescue. Clearly, Issaquah, District 10, and Eastside Fire and Rescue and the union are the only ones that will benefit from this merger. We should be doing what's best for the citizens of Fall City, not what's best for Issaquah.
I just want to clarify, because of the wording of the question is a little not completely accurate, that Issaquah is not District 10. Issaquah is one partner in EFR, and District 10 is one partner in EFR. And there, Issaquah and District 10 are two different areas. But as to who initiated the discussions, it was first discussed internally in 2008. An outside consultant recommended to contract with EFR, but it was not pursued because the cost was too high, so it was basically left at status quo. A merger was not discussed at that time. Since then, many fire districts consolidated in King County, so through periodic area chiefs meetings that occur on a regular basis. Our Chief Connor and EFR Chief Clark discussed ways to collaborate and work together when the merger topic came up in July of 2017. They explored what a merger would look like and took the idea to both EFR and EFR boards in December of 2017. Both boards approved of discussions and research. So an evaluation committee was formed consisting of a fire chief, a career firefighter, a volunteer firefighter, a commissioner, and four citizens. The group met 18 times over an eight-month period and took to look at all options. Four options came out of this committee: your standalone, become a contracted partner in ILA, contract with Snoke County Fire Department, and merger. As a contracted partner, the costs were again too expensive. Contracting with Snoke County proved to be too costly, and the joint government with a fire district and the city government just didn't make much sense. The merger pros and cons were presented to commissioners in May of 2018. Commissioners held public meetings to present the committee's facts. It was evident that the savings and benefits of service were too good not to allow the community to vote on it. And the criteria were how to improve service, have a stabilized funding, and have no loss of jobs. So in July of 2018, the commissioners thanked the committee for their work and evaluations they did, and that they had enough information to continue. So as to the benefits of a merger, these are the pros that were identified in the process. $250,000 to $300,000 of overall tax decrease. Eliminate four-year maintenance and operations levy that needs 60% border approval. Decrease of most taxpayers. Transport fee revenue. District 10 Board after merger will include District 27 commissioners through current terms. Expanded community outreach programs, community liaison officer, fire explorer program for youth, community emergency response team, all employees transfer...
For those of you standing up, there are some chairs in the back and sprinkled throughout if you want to get some. We can pause for a brief moment if some of you want to sit down. Lots of chairs in the back. Scotty, can you open that question while we see people get chairs and then we'll take away once we determine...
Yeah, please make yourself comfortable, in good financial shape, or do we need to merge with Fire District 10 to survive? So Manter, I'm going to be giving some numbers out, so feel free to write them down, watch the video, and please fact-check with the fire chiefs, since they've all come from them. So Chief Connor said that expenses have been increasing faster than revenues the last couple of years. The only reason we have not outspent our revenue was due to passing the last M&amp;L levy. Currently, Chief Connor said that we have a budget shortfall of $56,000. It means we're upside down. We're spending more money than what we're going to have. Our costs have increased 4% just this year alone. Fire District 27 does have $559,000 in reserves. That's taken Chief Connor years of frugal management of Fire District 27 to accumulate. We still have some spending expenses that do not have any money allocated for now, like our SCBA's, that need to be replaced soon, and Chief said it'll be somewhere between $150,000 and $200,000. Chief Connor said that the fire station is 15 years old now. It was a good station, but it's now had some deferred maintenance that really needs to get done. It needs a coat of paint. The HVAC units are starting to replace the end of the life, and in a few years, we're going to need a new tender. These are big-ticket items. But we need to realize that we're not being taken over. We are merging and joining a strong, healthy organization. Fire District 10 has the newest fire station in all of Eastside, down in Station 78. They also have a beautiful fleet of apparatus. You can go up to the station of our nation, look in the bay. They didn't take their equipment. They've loaded it with very new engines, aid cars, tenders, and it's a station that's just remodeled recently, a new kitchen remodel. They're taking good care of the equipment, and they're going to take good care of us, our equipment, our station. So Fire District 10 makes annual payments into the Eastside Fire Partnership of $7.2 million and has a district operating budget of $330,000. Fire District 10 holds a $650,000 operating revenue reserve as well. The Eastside Fire Partnership has fully funded of the following funds: apparatus replacement fund of $2.298 million, capital facilities and maintenance fund of $551,000, personal liability fund of $980,000, and a 10% operating revenue reserve fund of $2,256,000. That means they've got a total of $6 million, over $6 million in reserves that are set aside for improvement or rainy days. Chief Clark said that through the FD partnership, they've been paying into this fund, and they're entitled to these funds. Likewise, when Fire District 27 merges into Fire District 10, as part of it, District 10, we will have access to this money as well, type of over $6.5 million. So don't feel like we're giving it away. We're buying into a strong, healthy organization. Thanks.
Your Fire District 27 will soon be debt-free and cash-strong. In 2019, 2020, the two last $59,000 payments for the equipment that was purchased will be taken care of. By 2021, the last three payments of around $165,000 each will conclude the geo-bond used to finance the construction of our fire station, your fire station, with taxes that we all paid and voted on. Each year, as tax collections are received in around April and October is how our cycle works, which is the primary way that we receive funds to pay our expenses. In 2018, cash reserve funds fluctuated between $1.165 million and $1.887 million based on when that money came in and when the expenses were paid. Fire District 27 began 2018 with $1.527 million and ended the year with $1.717 million in cash reserve, banking the excess of $200,000 in 2018. Fire District 27's full year 2018 financial statements are posted on our website, safefallsityfire.com. The Fall City 27 Fire Station belongs to the citizens of Fall City. We bought and paid for it, and it can serve us for many years to come. We have two fire engines, two aid cars, a water tanker, several other utility vehicles, and rescue boats. We have thousands of dollars in emergency medical supplies and equipment, as well as fire protective gear and equipment. Like all fire districts, the assets are on replacement schedules and associated reserve funds, and we are well-positioned to do just that. Financial management and accountability has been a hallmark of our operations. If we merge with Issaquah D10, we turn over our fire station, our assets, your assets, equipment, and all of our cash to D10 and end our fire department as we know it today. This can never be reversed. Fire departments that are financially secure and stable don't need to pursue mergers that relinquish all of their assets and control to an out-of-area organization. Issaquah D10 came to us. We did not go looking to them for a merger. Thank you.
All right, keep it rolling again. Question four. So the no votes are going to answer first on this one here. I've heard that financial information, as reported by Fire District 10 and Eastside Fire and Rescue, cannot be verified, and the Washington State Auditor's Office has issued with bookkeeping. Is this true?
Yes, it is true. First, it's important to understand that Eastside Fire and Rescue does all the financial bookkeeping for Issaquah District 10, so the state auditor audits both of them at the exact same time. So here's what they found. The Washington State Auditor's Office completed its audit of Eastside Fire and Rescue in Issaquah District 10's 2015 financial statements on September 13th, 2018, and published the report, copies of which can be downloaded from the state auditor's website or our website. They're posted there as well. After you hear what they had to say, you'll understand why the 2016, 2017, and 2018 votes have not been closed yet. Here's what the auditor said, and I quote, "We found that there are numerous accounting deficiencies and irregularities that need to be corrected. Our audit identified deficiencies in internal controls over financial reporting that, when combined, would represent material weaknesses over financial reporting. We reported a similar material weakness in prior audits. Agency staff responsible for compiling the financial statements do not sufficiently understand generally accepted accounting principles and do not effectively use the budget, accounting, and reporting system, called VARs, manual, when preparing their financial statements. Further, the review process lacks sufficient detail to ensure the financial statements' balances are reasonable and accurate." Here's the rest of what the auditor recommends, and I quote, "We recommend that the district dedicate the necessary time and resources to ensure accurate financial reporting. Specifically, we recommend that the district allocate staff time to prepare, review, and annual financial report to ensure it is fairly presented, complete, and accurate in compliance. Pursuant to technical guidance when implementing new accounting requirements. And also, provide adequate training for the staff for financial accounting and reporting to assure compliance." If the state auditor doesn't trust District 10 and Eastside Fire and Rescue's financial reporting, how can we trust the data that we're hearing? How can we provide, how do we have any way whatsoever of verifying their claims of less cost? We don't, because we don't have anything newer than the 2015 financial statements that we can be assured are correct. I'll address the second part of the question at my closing statements, because we're only allowed a three minutes during this section. But I think the bottom line is, before we turn over all of our money to an organization, we have to be sure they can manage it properly. And what the auditor has told us is that's not the case at all.
There were some native comments from the auditor of the 2014, 2015 state audit of District 10 and EFR. They were all centered on reporting and accounting practices that were required for all fire districts. All fire districts in the county have been using the same practice as District 10 and EFR have been using for many years, with no findings in the previous audits, including the Fall City Fire Department. The reason Fall City did not get the same report in their audit is because they're on a three-year cycle and they were able to correct the accounting practices before the next audit. EFR District 10 easily corrected this within a week of the notice. So here are some additional quotes from that same audit. These are the auditor's notes. "It is the district's responsibility to ensure accurate financial reporting of its accounting transactions. Our responsibility is to express an opinion on the financial statements based on our audit. In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects." So here is the auditor's summary of the financial position, again from the same audit. "The district's total assets as of December 31st, 2015 exceeded liabilities by $10.96 million. The district's total net position increased by $1.67 million, or 23% in 2015. The district's general fund balance at the end of 2015 was $2.9 million, the 22.6% increase over the prior year. All the general fund balance is assigned and available to fund ongoing activities. For 2015, the district's debt decreased by $389,000 during that current year." So all fire department financial records are available to the public and very easily found. Now back to Fall City's financial condition. Both sides here agree that what a great job our commissioners have done managing our budget and funds. Everyone involved has seen how well we have been able to do and operate in the past with what we've had to work with. Now, the same administration that everyone is complimenting on their financial management skills has projections to indicate that we will have a $56,000 shortfall this year. Our administrators have proven to be very, very good at projections in the past. Just additional is, District 10 has not been audited since 2014 and 15 because the state has backed up, and they have hired an outside auditor to make sure they are.
Should have gone a little buzzer before this, huh?
I have a quick, how's everybody doing as per the hard chair in the fire room? You doing okay? Need to stand up and whittle or anything?
Take it short.
I just want to be cognizant, we're at the halfway point, by the way. Okay, all right. Next question.
Cool. And thank you. Everyone's been great so far. Awesome job. Audience participation's fantastic, so really, really good. So the yes vote will answer this question first here. Chief Connor is supporting the merger. Will he have a opinion position? Chief Connor believes this merger is the best solution for 27 and for the community it serves, and that's why he is finally officially supporting it. He's not the only person who's supporting it either. Our senator representing us, Mark Muller, is supporting it. Representative Ramos is supporting it. Representative Lisa Callen from our district is supporting it. Our King County Executive Council member, Kathy Lambert, is supporting it. Two of our fire commissioners are supporting it. These are all people that are smart people that we've elected who've looked through the details and realized that this is a good thing for the community. It's going to save money, it's a more effective use of our tax money. But back to also the firefighters of Fall City managed to support it. And the volunteer firefighters of Fall City also voted, made... And the volunteer firefighters of Fall City have also voted and they supported as well. Everyone's on board supporting this, it's a good thing. Chief Connor's new position, when we merge with District 10, he'll be a fire chief officer. And I asked him, and he said he'd be more than happy to take your phone calls. You will have the direct line to a leader and to what will be the then largest fire department on the east side. We're going to be part of that. We're going to be part of what Eastside did today, send some engines over to Ellensburg to help with the officer's funeral today. Right now it's Fall City, we can't participate at the regional level, we can't, we can barely cover ourselves. The administrative assistant currently in Fall City, also they've been holding a spot open for us for the last year, as we've been a little slow to make a decision. And then all of the firefighters not only would have a spot with Eastside Fire, they're already part of the same work group, the same labor group. All of their time and grade will be maintained. There's already a plan in place on how we integrate the two work groups and work together. The firefighters are really going to benefit in this because they're going to have opportunity to grow. We're not going to lose our firefighters to other departments. At Bellevue, we've had some firefighters that took pay cuts, left Fall City to come to Bellevue. Like my cohort said, we've had officers that left Palm Springs. We had a firefighter that also left here, very, very unwilling to do so, that took a pay cut to go to Eastside Fire. Because we need, we don't have any training, we're improperly equipping our firefighters, we're putting their safety and our safety at risk by doing so. So we need to fully staff our firehouse, we need to train our firefighters for the safety of them and the safety of ourselves. So that's why I need to vote yes. Thanks.
As I said before, Chris Connor and I share the same start date in 1981. That's nearly 38 years for Chief Connor. Chief Connor has dedicated his life to building this fire department into what it is today. He has been a cornerstone in our community for nearly four decades. As part of the Izquahua-D-10 merger, EFR and the approval of the labor union has created a non-line position for the chief to assume. Specifically, at the Izquahua Fire District 10 Commissioners Meeting on non-line position for the chief to assume. Specifically, at Izquahua-D-10 Commissioners Meeting on December 10th, 2018, per the official meeting minutes, a letter of agreement between local union and the Board of King County Fire District 10 implemented a reorganization to the Battalion Chief Collective Bargaining Agreement effective January 1, 2019. Effective January 1, 2019, the position Battalion Chief of Logistics and all associated job duties shall be removed from the Battalion Chief Collective Bargaining Agreement and becomes the work of exempt employee. Chief Connor is that exempt employee. This work shall continue as exempt until one of the following occurs. A, the King County Fire Protection District 10 and King County Fire Protection District 27 merger fails in 2019. Or B, upon successful passes, a said merger, Fire Chief Chris Connor eventually retires from Eastside Fire and Rescue. I have nothing but the greatest respect for Chief Connor and everything that he has done for this community. Two of his current fire commissioners are supporting the proposed merger, and if the merger goes through, he is dependent on EFR for continued employment until he retires.
Okay, thank you. Question number six, here we go. The firefighter union states that the merger will improve the service level in Fall City. Is this true? And if so, specifically, how will service change?
Thank you. We've already talked about the truth that the level of service of the Fall City residents will receive will not change with the merger. So let's talk about something that will have significant impact on everyone in Fall City, the tax we pay for the service that we receive. There are major differences in the way citizens are taxed in District 27 versus Izquahua D-10 that everyone should understand. District 27 relies solely on assessed property value, and the rate is applied equally to all parcels within the district. The increase in the total amount assessed for the entire district is limited to 1% plus new construction by law. Regardless of how many of your property values increase, the district can collect no more than 1% more in new construction from the previous year. This is completely different from Izquahua's D-10 taxing structure, which we would be forced to change to. The Izquahua 10 model is a two-part taxing model. The first part is based on a tax rate of $1 per thousand of the total assessed value of your property, and the tax you pay increases every year, your property valuation increases at the exact same rate the assessed property value increases, with no limit. For example, if King County assesses your values, your house and land, at $250,000 in 18, and the value was increased to $300,000 in 19, your base tax amount will increase by $50 for a total of $300 in 2019. That's a 20% increase in one year on the base rate alone. You have no protection under the law limiting your tax increase like you do today with District 27. In addition to the $1 per thou, $1 per thousand, excuse me, you have to pay a fire benefit charge based on the square footage of all your structures, including barns, sheds, garages, etc., and the theoretical amount of water flow it takes to put out a fire structure on your property. If we merge with D-10, this new fee structure will be levied starting in tax year 2020. There is absolutely no guarantee how much you will pay in taxes from year to year with the Izquahua-D-10 taxing model. In addition, the fire benefit charge hurts fixed income low-income business owners based on a Izquahua-D-10 fire benefit charge taxing model. Tax charges would increase significantly on your already struggling commercial properties, but some businesses see increases of $2,500 on an already struggling commercial properties. In addition, excuse me, homes less than 1,500 square feet would see a tax increase. This will have a negative impact on fixed income and low-income property owners. Please do not trust the advertising that 77% initially for the owners in Fall City would pay less in property tax in 2019 and beyond with the Izquahua-D-10 taxing model. Bottom line, the Izquahua 10 fire benefit charge taxing method creates financial instability for the taxpayers.
So I encourage you to do your homework actually, talk to the fire chief, talk to firefighters, talk to the chief clerk, and find out how it's actually, all the taxing's being applied. There is savings. That's why Chief Connor is supporting this, because we're doing more with what money we have. But there's no question, absolutely, service will improve. That was why Maple Valley reached out and requested a bid for service from Eastside Fire, and they complied and gave them a bid, what it costs to provide oversight for them. So Chief Connor currently struggles to keep the staffing up at night. We have two-person minimum staffing, currently we're short on volunteers, and the engine is sometimes staffed with two. It's not safe. We have one full-time person and one volunteer firefighter who could be very, very new. It's not safe, it's putting us, our families, our community, it's putting them at risk too. It's not fair to anybody. Most of the firefighters, the volunteer firefighters that we have currently, Dr. Chief Connor can confirm it, are most who are seeking employment in the fire service industry. Some of them are not even getting a chance to run shifts because we're training them. We do a great job training volunteer firefighters here, and we have really good firefighters. They're getting hired, picked up, they're going to other departments, and that's kind of, volunteerism has decreased over the last couple decades, and that's just a struggle that Chief Connor has had to work through. Some of the benefits we're going to have is, we're going to get three-person firefighter staffing every day. If you knew that last year during Christmas, we dropped to one person on a rig, and it was only because a firefighter said bye to the family, came in and staffed the rig up, that we had at least two on there. The firefighters that we have, besides Battalion Chief, we're going to have four on duty now. Battalion Chief who's there currently was placed because it's a strategic location. Where the Fall City Fire Station is, is perfect for our community, but it is perfectly primed to put a lot of key specialty trained people here. It's going to become a specialty response station, and we're going to have some of the most highly skilled, highly trained and experienced firefighters right here in our community. It'll put us, our families, our kids safer. There's no question that additional training and experience makes you better or well-rounded firefighter. That's why I became a skilled paramedic through the ridiculous amounts of training that I did down in Bellevue. And we can do the same thing with our firefighters here and train them up, keep us safer. One of the biggest things we have to talk about to a succession planning, I'm going to address that later, when Chief Connor leaves in a year or two, as I already said, he's on his final time, we have no plan, he is very replaceable. He has led us this far, and we don't have anyone else right now who can fill the shoes. Thanks.
All right, cool. Question seven. On social media and in meetings, opponents of a proposed merger have also expressed a love, respect, and support for our Fall City firefighters. However, Fall City firefighters and volunteers have officially endorsed the merger with Fire District 10. How would each committee reconcile their support for the men and women who are asking for this merger to pass? And the yes votes are going to go first on this one.
All right. Now imagine a job where there is no opportunity for advancement, limited resources for continued education and training, knowing that other people doing your job in the surrounding area receive more regular, updated, and ongoing training. Some guys have left to find more opportunities. How much longer would someone stay under these circumstances? Many firefighters get hired here, some of our own volunteers, and they have left because of the lack of opportunities here. So Palm Springs is in a similar situation, they had two officers leave for that very reason, and they took a pay cut to do so, so it's not about the money. These guys want to have the best training they can get and be prepared for anything. We can expect to lose about 20% of our hires because of this. One of the biggest fears of a firefighter is not being prepared, he's off-duty, which requires paying firefighters who are receiving the training while also paying the firefighters who are on duty available to run calls. Most training in Fall City happens while firefighters are on duty. That means the types of fire training is limited because they cannot practice large operations by pulling a bunch of holes off of an engine and emptying a water tank because then that engine is no longer available to respond to calls.
Jay and I are spoiling this question. So I'm hoping the other side can really answer the question too, because they're starting to dance around and talk about budgets and other things. That's kind of, if you get online and look, that's kind of been the tactic. So let's, we really want to focus on true facts. If you're not sure if the facts are true, talk to the fire chief, talk to another fire chief, talk to the firefighters. I'm happy to answer the questions, but talk to people that will actually give you the true, honest answers. It's going to be, if this doesn't pass, it's going to be really hard because we're going to have to, we can't blame the firefighters, they have to do what's best for their family. That's why some of them have left. You can't expect someone to go 20, 30 years at a single-station department where there's really no opportunity for promotion. When an excellent officer retires, that's, all those folks have one shot to maybe get a spot to promote. There's no way that we have any succession plan because they can't become a battalion chief or any kind of higher leadership to practice and hone and train those skills. So currently in the back corners are our unduty battalion chief, that could be one of our firefighters here in Fall City who could fill that role and start to grow into a leadership position. We have the opportunity here to do what's best for everybody, for us, for our pocketbook, for the resources that we have, and create some long-term plans for our fire department so we're not going to struggle for lobby to lobby. Thanks.
Of course we support our firefighters. They support the merger. Why do they support the merger? The firefighters will personally benefit in several ways. Increase in pay, increase in benefits, higher lifetime retirement pay. A firefighter with 10 years of experience would see a 10.5% increase in pay with the merger. A lieutenant would see a 12.14% increase in pay. A captain would see a 13.6% increase. Keep in mind, there are several firefighters in our department that have 15 to 30 years of experience, and they would see significantly higher increases in that. All of the information I just quoted is posted to the website. We've also put on the website the union contract for Fall City as well as Izquahua District 10, so you can do your own analysis and comparison. We fully support our firefighters, and we believe they deserve fair compensation for the risk they take. We don't need a merger to pay them properly, we just need commissioners that know how to do their job. The only way a Fall City firefighter can go to work for Eastside Fire Rescue without losing all of their seniority is through a merger. In the fire service, there's two ways you get hired. You either get hired as a probationary firefighter, which means you give up all your seniority, all your pay that you had at that level, and you start as a probie. Or you do what's called lateral transfer. A lateral transfer is when a fire department says, "We're accepting people into our department at their same level of seniority and pay as they had before." Eastside Fire and Rescue is not doing lateral transfers. So the only way that our firefighters can go to work for Eastside Fire and Rescue is through a merger with one of the partners. The merger is not about the firefighters. We don't, we don't, we grant them whatsoever for wanting more pay. They deserve it and they should get it at Fall City, and they should get the training they need at Fall City. However, what a merger is about, it's about the structure, it's about the operation, it's about financing, and it's about the management of a business called a fire department. We need to separate those two things and look at those things separately. We need to think about how we can fix our fire department here and keep it independent. We don't need to give up our fire department to provide those types of benefits to our firefighters. We can fix what's wrong with this department and we can make our firefighters happy. Thank you.
Okay, we're coming up to our final question now, and then we'll go into closing statements after that. So question eight, the pro signs state that we have local control, but once the current commissioners' terms expire, how do we get enough votes to have another Fall City commissioner on the board? So that's first.
Per state law, if the merger is completed, the existing five Izquahua D-10 commissioners would be combined with the three Fire District 27 commissioners for a total of eight commissioners. We would be in a minority position on day one. As District 27 commissioners expire on 12/31/19, 12/31/21, and the last one on 12/31/23, new commissioners will not be elected to the Izquahua D-10 board until the total number of commissioners drops back to five. Even with term expirations, we would never be in a position of minority, of majority, excuse me. When new elections happen, Fall City's 3,821 registered voters would have to overcome Fire District 10's 15,236 voters if we were to every-elect commissioner to the board again. All of our equipment, vehicles, building, and cash will be surrendered to D-10. All of our employees would become employees of the Izquahua D-10, Fall City District 27, after 70-plus years of operation would cease to exist and could never be reestablished again. What guarantee do we have that the station in Fall City would continue to operate as it does today? If we don't have control of the board, no guarantee. EFR and D-10 would be free to do whatever they want with this facility, its people, and its equipment. Absolutely no one has the authority to make a commitment to the Fall City residents that this station will continue to operate as it does today and going forward. Only future D-10 and EFR commissioners and their chief will have that authority. As example, on January 11th, continuing 1st of 2019, the Savannah Fire Station 81 on 212th Avenue cut the hours, and the fire engine and crews were moved from the station, only having an eight-car available for calls between the hours of 8:30 a.m. and 8:30 p.m. This is a significant decrease in fire production and medical aid for the area the Pine Lake Station covers. Active fires can double in size very quickly. A patient in cardiac arrest very seldom has a successful outcome or fully recovers after 10 minutes without proper CPR and AED to shock the heart. It used to say the residents of Pine Lake are not happy with this decision Izquahua D-10 and EFR made. That example shows how services could be changed. Retaining local control of our independent Fall City Fire Department also is important when you look at it from a community perspective rather than a firefighter's perspective. I call Fall City local. In this situation, my belief is that Izquahua D-10 or not- In this situation, my belief is that Izacoa-D10 or not, let's control ourselves. We have been doing it for 70-plus years. Thank you for your time.
Local control. The reality is we are not giving anything away to anybody in a merger. We are becoming District 10 and managed by EFR. We would be acquiring access to all of the resources that they have, equipment and human, and realizing lower costs because the costs are shared by a large number of people. Looking at the big picture, what is the concern about becoming District 10? District 10 and EFR will have an interest in providing the same outstanding local fire services to Fall City that they provide to the other areas that they are responsible for. The Carnation Fire Station is in District 10. I encourage you to stop by there and see the equipment they have. Station is full of equipment, newer fire engine, and water tender. We will still have firefighters being involved in the community. We will still have the fire department with the desire to do what is best for this community. None of that will change. As District 10 and EFR, we will have a bigger voice in getting what we need for our community. In the areas of King County EMS dispatch, King County EMS dispatch services, Medic One, regional training, all of those types of services will be more inclined to listen to requests from District 10 and EFR than they would Fall City. Changes cannot be unilaterally made within any of EFR's partner's service areas without that partner being in support of that change. Each partner's board must approve any changes. So what kind of representation can Fall City have on the District 10 Board of Commissioners in the years to come? District 10 is spread out like patchwork over a large area, and these are rural areas, so areas like the cities of Carnation, cities of Izacoa and Sammamish will not be able, will not be included in elections to decide who sits on District 10's board. Carnation is in District 10, which has less population than Fall City's service area. Going back 20 years to 1999, every year there has been anywhere from one to three Carnation residents on the District 10 board, which has five seats. This history indicates that it is very likely Fall City can be well-represented as part of District 10.
Real quick, also, over the last 10 years, there has been no contested races in the Fire District 10 fire commissioners. I have 30 seconds left. Okay. So if you want representation, run for the office because you probably won't have anyone running against you. And to think they're not gonna look out for us is like saying the firefighters are gonna respond to Carnation and not take good care of people. They're going to. So our commissioners in District 10 are gonna take good care of us too. So don't let scare tactics try and sway you.
Nice recovery. Okay, cool. Cool. So we're gonna go to closing statements now, so these are gonna be five minutes long each. So since the no-votes went second on the intros, we're gonna do yes votes, do their closing statements first, and then follow-up of no-votes, and then I'll do a final just little conclusion, and that will be the end of the debate from there. So I'm gonna put the mic down, and you guys can come up and get started whenever you're
So the history of Fall City Fire Department since the beginning, every single volunteer and career member of this department will always be a part of Fall City, no matter what direction the results of this ballot takes the department. The history lives in the building they built, the pictures on the walls, friendships made, careers launched, and the services they provided. That will not change. Since 2010, our levy rate has gone from $1.23 per thousand to $1.57 per thousand in 2019. That's $1,000 with assessed value. That is a 22% increase in our fire service taxes in nine years. Remaining independent, we can expect that trend to continue. So there are many reasons to vote yes on Proposition 1. Lower costs for better fire services, better use of our tax dollars, fewer tax dollars spent, long-term financial support for our Fire District employees to support our firefighters and give them more training opportunities to be prepared for any call.
Thank you. So tonight, I'm gonna be responding on Medic 3, and I can tell you that we don't get 12 people in cardiac arrest. We get seven in the elderly. So the same thing with the dispatch criteria as far as what's gonna actually come. This is all great right up until like the last snowstorm we've had, the windstorm before that, any major disaster, and it's to each their own. I can tell you working from Bellevue, our plan is we're not sending anything to Izacoa because our job and responsibility is for the taxpayers there. Likewise, it's for the partners of Eastside Fire that have all contributed funds, that have ownership representing them. That's who their job is to cover. Their job is not to cover us. So we are on our own. So what little personnel you see in the station, staffing, our bits of apparatus, that is it, and we're on our own. So we need to realize that, think about bigger picture here, when we have an earthquake, a big brush fire, the wildland fires are becoming only more and more prevalent, that we're not ready to handle that on our own. So the safest thing we can do is merge together. I just wanted to talk real quick again about the endorsements. All of our elected officials, Chief Connor, who has brought us this far with his leadership, our fire commissioners, our representatives, our senators, King County Council, our partners, all these people have looked into this and are doing what's best for the community. They're not giving anything away. So don't yield to fear tactics, think with your head, and realize what we're getting out of this. We're saving over a quarter million dollars, over a million dollars in conservative quotations over 10 years. They're estimating possibly the next few years we could save that much money, over a million dollars. The career advancement for the firefighters up there. We're gonna continue losing our firefighters again and again and again because we can't guarantee that we can keep them here. And you can't blame them for wanting to look out for their family and also wanting some career fulfillment, wanting some training, wanting to be able to maybe go to a visitor station. Maybe someone from a visitor station can come out here and bring that experience. We're gonna get much, much better service. We're gonna get three-person, 24-hour staffing, expanded volunteer program. They've got a lot more money pumped into their volunteer program. Expanded community outreach program. We're gonna get a public information officer. Chief Connor said one big issue right now, well, there is no fire expectancy happening because the county doesn't have the staffing to do it. Last year, there was a fire in one of the commercial businesses. Its hood-and-duck system is way behind, and people are actually still living in it after the fire. We don't have the staffing to do it. Eastside Fire, they have two people working in a fire prevention system or fire prevention office full-time that could come and take care of that. It means it's gonna keep our business safer, it's gonna keep our residents safer. We're gonna have additional, and Chief Connor's excited about this one, we're gonna have additional administrative support. We're gonna have the HR department, IT department. Chief Connor doesn't have to fix the internet and fix the computers. We're gonna have facilities. They have a shop. Right now, you get to use their shop, but again, you look out for your own rigs, and ours might get put in the back of the line. If we're part of them and we're part of the partnership, our stuff gets moved to the front. But a big thing is we're gonna have a training division too. We're gonna have available Fall City training staff that can keep our firefighters safer.
As devastating as the state auditor's report is, that's nothing as compared to what you're gonna hear next. At the January 8, 2019 Fall City Commissioners Meeting, Eastside Fire Rescue and Izacoa District 10 presented to our commissioners an updated merger summary and financial proposal, which was dated the same day. The proposal compares the cost of running the Fall City Fire Department versus what it would cost to run if it was operated by District 10. They outlined in the proposal all the savings the taxpayers would see if we merged. A copy of that proposal is available on our website. After reviewing the proposal, many of us found flaws in the math, we found flaws in the assumptions and the conclusions. We raised these objections with the Fall City Commissioners. We asked Izacoa District 10 and Eastside Fire Rescue for the financial data used to summarize the numbers on the proposal, because they were just summary numbers. Two of the Fall City Commissioners voted to proceed with the proposal regardless of the fact they didn't have the data to back it up. After repeated requests for financial data and no response, I decided to invoke the Washington State Public Records Act, in which it mandates that the fire department must release the data requested. So please listen carefully as I read to you the response I got back from Eastside Fire Rescue. This letter is all posted up on the website, so you can read it for yourself. This is from the administrative assistant at Eastside Fire Rescue, and I quote, "Mr. Iverson, below is an expected timeline for the release of records you requested." And then she put together a very nice chart that goes through, and it shows me when she's gonna give me the information. Let me read some of that to you. 2015 financial statements for both District 10 and Eastside Fire Rescue, shipped to me on April 1st. 2016 financial statements, on April 4th. 2017 financial statements, on April 8th. But what I'm really concerned with is all the information that went into this proposal that showed the citizens just how much money we're gonna save by this merger. Do you know when they're gonna release that information to us? April 25th, two days after the vote. Is that transparency? Is that honesty? You can't make this step up. This is real, and you can read this on the website. So to summarize, Izacoa District 10 and Eastside Fire Rescue are asking the citizens of Fall City to turn over all of our assets, $1.7 million in cash, our fire station, our engines, our eight cars, our rescue boats, all of our equipment, based on the proposal created that they will not allow independent verification of until two days after the merger vote. The auditors say that they have numerous accounting deficiencies and irregularities that need to be corrected. There is no chance that I would vote to turn over my department to a group of people who can't make two plus two equal four and clearly cannot run their own organization with the same level of transparency that we do in Fall City. So to summarize, a merger with District 10 would not change the level of service that we receive today. We have mutual aid contracts. Would cause us to lose financial and operational control of our fire department, would create higher taxes, tax instability for all of us, overburden our fixed-income people, and force business owners whose taxes are gonna go up significantly to look elsewhere for their businesses. So what if the merger fails? What's next? What do we do? Well, we ask the commissioners who pushed through this merger without demanding validation to step down and replace them with people who understand how to properly manage a fire department. We hire a 12 firefighter, so we have full three-man crews around the clock. We put together trading programs that will assure our firefighters are trained in the skills they need for arguing area. And we ensure an operation that provides transparency, free from outside influence, and provides accountability to its citizens. Again, the purpose of this presentation is not to tell you to vote one way or the other. It's to ask you to get educated. Go to the website, look at the factual data. This isn't scare tactics. This is fact. Everything that we talked about tonight is up on the website. Please go there and become educated and make an educated vote. That's all we ask. Thank you for coming tonight.
Okay, awesome. Cool, we gone through eight questions, gone through closing statements. So at the end of the day, I think the most important thing here is, is make sure you get out there and vote. Use your right to vote. I wanna thank the gentlemen on our panel here, so all four of you guys, if we can give them all a round of applause. I was anxious about coming up here and having to do this tonight, so I can't imagine how they feel having to go through all that, all that information and provide it to you and make sure it's accurate and everything like that. So again, make sure you vote April 23rd, yes or no on Proposition 1. Fall City Community Association Meeting, April 2nd. We're gonna be at the Fire Station as usual, I think, right? Yeah, still there. So we're gonna be there, and I'm sure if you have any individual questions, do you guys wanna make yourselves available, or if anybody wants to come up and ask any questions, talk to these guys, I'm sure they're available. And did you have anything to say?
All right, thanks everybody for coming out, and thanks again for the video. We, the Fall City officers, would appreciate your feedback on what did you think of this forum, right? It was a good moderated forum, so the two of you guys can hear a bunch of the info and insight. Unfortunately, didn't get to ask live questions, but we value your feedback, so go ahead and get it to us at your leisure. And thanks again for being here. Hope to see you in a future meeting. Thanks.